Hello, we're going to call this meeting to order. We will start with roll call. Tony Corpey is here. Bruce Raboin.
Here.
Roxanne Skobstedde Deitch. Jennifer Baker. Emily McGodigal.
Here.
Ted Saxton. Joanne Smith.
Here.
Kevin Grover.
Here.
Mitchell Erickson. Not here? Fudge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda. Can I get a motion for agenda approval? So moved. A second?
Second.
And discussion?
Okay, just a couple announcements, just so you're aware. There were several, a couple things added. There was a PSEO contract, I think it's thirty, thirty-nine, and forty. There's a PSEO contract that we got today and they want it by September twenty-third. And so that was added. There was a hire of, I'm gonna just look at Don Marine, that was added. And the hire of Angelo Scholler for the PALS coordinator was added. And this was since it was released on Friday, so I just want to acknowledge. And there was also a correction on the election resolution. It listed four positions, it's only three. So I don't know if anyone else caught that or not, but we're set to go. So that is all I have for corrections or minor changes.
Don Marine, right?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Next, we have open forum. We're gonna start with Finch Erickson, student rep.
Alright, so school-wise, homecoming's coming up. It's kind of our biggest priority right now. It's gonna be the twenty-sixth through the thirtieth of last week of September there. And we're gonna start, and we already have the dress-up days already ready to go. And we'll be planning that with MHS. Let's see, Wednesday's gonna be our Pet Fest. That's gonna be at one-thirty during sixth and seventh hour in the FHS gym. Royalty will be crowned there, so parents, you can go to the Pet Fest if you want. It'll also be livestreamed if the broadcasting class can figure out their computer. But it should be livestreamed by then. And seeing them that Friday, we'll be the parade. That's gonna be at one-thirty. Student Council's decorating the main street windows of four or five businesses this Sunday at two. We're also looking for any more businesses that wanna, we're just decorating windows trying to get everyone hyped up for homecoming. And then October first, that's Saturday, we will have the dance. That's gonna be from nine to twelve PM. And tickets are being sold in the FHS office from the twenty-sixth to the thirtieth. And they can also pick up their picture forms too in the office there. Alright, blood drive, that's coming up on October twelfth. So we're gonna be calling a whole bunch of people, so sorry if you hear phone call. That'll just be October twelfth, and we'll just be calling, I think it's like two hundred people or something, so. Cake-wise, there'll be a block party this weekend, the twenty-fourth, from eleven to two PM with Utasca. Student Council and MHS members should be there and helping and sharing with that. Otherwise, that's all I have. Any questions or...
Sorry. Next up, we have Mike Koschik from Police Chief, School Resource Officer. Information says...
Thanks, Adam. I have some information for you. I've always wanted to hand stuff out. It's just kind of a working document that I've been going off before, the position. And I'm not gonna read a word for it, but I'd like to hear any questions you guys have about and what your thoughts are on the position so far? Perfect. And like I said, I didn't entertain any questions you have. I think for the most part, the program has been extremely successful. We, like I know, we started with twelve hours a week last spring. Honestly, it just keeps growing, and the presence of Officer Belletto in the schools is, I would say, amazing, the work he's done so far. And that's all fine, but as we noted, kind of towards spring, we started to see some more tragic incidents happen with the school shootings. And with that bearing in mind, there's another reason we want Officer Belletto in the school, and that is to prevent that sort of thing. But you have noted in number two there, we currently have a schedule to go to an active shooter trainer course. Where we'll train all local law enforcement and our tailored response to each school. As well as he's the coordinator for the Alice training. And we have an Alice trainer on our staff, which my hope is we'll train each school and every member in the school with appropriate responses to any kind of threat violence as well. As time moves on, we're planning on getting certified as a School Resource Officer, bringing Dare back into the community. But the important thing I'd like to note is that we're all starting at the very ground level. We've never had this, and I hope you guys kind of share the excitement I have for this. Because what Kevin and I started with was just maybe having someone in for a couple hours for two days a week. And what we've seen is Joshua really take this, and he's attending all dances, games, really putting himself out there to create an impression on the youth and maybe catch kids who are not always caught by the system. Kind of form a safety net, provide some kind of a community outreach to people who may not go to you guys or may not go to me, but may go to Officer Belletto because they trust him, right? And that's the goal. So he's got a lot on his plate, but he seems to be well-adapted to the situation. Honestly, my goal in the future is to get a full-time School Resource Officer in the school. This would be a joint effort. I'm not asking for anything today. I'm just saying, as we kind of build towards that goal, I wanted to gauge your reception of this program so far. What do you guys think of it? What you'd like to see happen? Where you think this could go? And if you have any input tonight, that would be great.
And I'll throw a couple things in, and again, I'm not gonna put Tim on the spot right now. For the most part, most of Joshua's time, I can't say all, I don't know if he's been to the elementary at all or not, but you know, there's potential, but mainly been at the high school. You know, and it's just like anything, it takes finding out, figuring out, you know, we've got to, we want a desk out. Obviously, you need a private place to meet with kids, meet with, you know, and so we have, but we're working through that. He has a desk, well, we won't call it a desk, a table and chair is what he wanted. You know, because you do have to be out, and not that you have to be standing the whole time, but like during lunches. Yeah, he's active, he's around, but there's other times he can sit and, you know, be on his computer, be approachable, you know, that type of thing. And so, yeah, it's infancy and where we can use him and where, you know, he sees need. I do worry a little bit because he has been, you know, he can't be at everything. You know, I mean, I'm just gonna take it, Tim or Missy, to be at everything, every day. I mean, there's just too much, so I hope he'll at least, you know...
Not divert himself out.
Kevin, I'm sorry.
No, I just said we don't want him to divert himself out in the beginning, too.
And the goal too with that is for him to be more of a coordinator even. So to say, well, this is happening at the school, could we get an officer to come over here and go to this? So he's not at everything, but he's making sure we have a presence there. And that's another important part, and it's a good point. Even in a full-time capacity, he can't cover all the bases, but he can coordinate and be a liaison more effectively than the traditional full-time police officers in the school for two days a week and just handling specific problems, right? Again, showing the cost analysis and number three, that's more of just where we'd like to be in future budgetary discussions. It might be something we could all talk about. Obviously, it's nothing I came here to talk about tonight, but I just wanted to be transparent in what costs were. I'm gonna be perfectly honest, we are a bit behind in this area. There's schools smaller and communities smaller than ours with a dedicated School Resource Officer. Kevin and I have been exploring grants and will continue to do so. I just don't want to fall too far behind the curve and have something unforeseen happen. So we're taking, right now, we're taking on all the costs to make sure the schools are as protected as we can. I'm just saying in the future, I would hope that we can kind of come to more of an understanding and where the direction for the School Resource Officer will be.
Sounds good.
Has, have you looked, I'm sure you have, you've looked into other districts that already have SROs? And is this competitive, competitive pay scale?
Yeah, I mean, most, and again, it's, you know, bridging the gap, obviously, you know. We have no use, and I'm just gonna, that's the first thing, one of the first things we talked about in June, July, and August, for the most part, we have no. But yeah, most of them are full-time, they're hired, you know, not by the school. They're hired, you know, by the city, the school contracts. Now, I'm gonna say there's a variety of examples from a school paying a hundred percent of the cost to places where it's shared at different percentages. And, you know, like I said, right now, I mean, we've had a contract with the city, ten thousand or twelve thousand, just for services in general, you know, and so I assume that's going a little bit. But it's, yeah, I think, I'm hopeful that we see the value and that the students and families see the value, and then we can have a conversation. You know, I think, you know, part of it, it's kind of like having the drum dot com. It's that knowing that they're around somewhere, that they could be here today. You know, that type deal, and you know, that's the piece of the job, you know, there's times, and again, I don't know, sometimes he may park it back, sometimes he may be parked in front, yeah, you know, it's that element of, you don't know where he's at. You know, type deal, and it's just another tool in the toolbox, but the bigger piece is, I'm hopeful that he, you know, he is talking with kids, you know, creating relationships. And to me, that's where, if nothing ever happens, you can't say what helped. Just like teachers, just like anyone in the building, you never know who saved an incident, you know, I mean, unless you truly do something, but you make a connection, change a student, and that's what it's all about.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's a good point, and we all talk about having police officers in the school or teachers carrying guns. This conversation's going, but really what it is, is like you said, the police officers form those relationships with outcast students who have never been hurt before, right? And I think if you get the right person, and I believe Joshua is the right person for this job, we're not putting him in there to respond to active shooters or threats, if I was, we're putting him there to prevent it, to take action with kids who maybe he can say, they're all alone, they're isolated, he's forming bonds with them. I think that's, like you were alluding, that's the secret right there. And have him in the school as much as possible, I firmly believe that would be, I mean, you can't underestimate the value in that. But obviously, I understand everyone's budgetary constraints are different, and it's just a conversation we need to have. But you can rest assured that I will continue to put him in there for as much as I can. And any input you guys have on where you'd like to see this go, I would value, and feel free to contact me.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We're all excited about this. I think there's, I've experienced different schools in Minnesota as well as in Wisconsin. And I know when I was in La Crosse, they had a very robust SRO program. And did a lot of collaboration with the county mental health system at that point. And we did a lot of joint trainings around restorative justice practices and mental health first aid. And it really, I think, you know, the worst-case scenario, which is over here, which is some of the things that are, make the splash in the news. But it is really that preventative and that networking and that relationship building that is key. And I see that you did list a few trainings that you were interested in, but I was curious if there's other ones that you've looked at or if there's other ones that have kind of spiked the interest along the lines of those building relationships and, you know, some of those other really interesting pieces of the SRO programs.
Well, and I think that's where I lean on the SRO, right? So my goal is to send the School Resource Officer certification, and he'll build those networks. He'll find out what works in communities that are size and bigger ones and tailor his response for us. Because our, what I follow law enforcement, even any kind of responses you need to this community, you can't adopt, but Duluth is doing in Virginia, we're unique. And we need to tailor that response and take all those pieces and make that SRO program our own. And we really have a chance here to do something unique. Like I said, the most we've done is we've had a Dare Officer, we've had juvenile diversion Officer. And the Dare's good, and the juvenile diversion Officer is catching people who have already kind of encountered us and diverting them. But we need that preventative approach. We need someone who is always around and is always there for people. And that's the goal of our Police Department of the Community, and I think we adopt that strategy here, right? Transition to mental health wellness awareness, right? Look at the problems, not from a law enforcement strictly, but how do we help people, right? That's our goal, and that's how we're trying to tailor this SRO program. And I think, to your point, we just take pieces of what's working and we implement that in our school. It's a learning process, but I think we have a chance to do a lot of good here, and really excited for this program. And like I said, this is all good stuff, and I get the feeling you guys are kind of all on the same page here. We're not throwing a cop in the school to try to intimidate anyone. Our goal is to try to keep our kids safe and also just to keep that relationship going, right? And that's the goal, but it's good points, and it's also something we are considering.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was fortunate to work in a school district that had multiple officers at any given time. And their presence and their relationships, I consider to be invaluable, you know, it was just... And there were some officers, obviously, that were unbelievable in their job and how they connected. So I can only see it being a good thing.
And that's one piece Mike and I talked about last year was, it is the right person, don't take it the wrong way. There's teachers, there's people just in general, we all connect, you know, different people connect better or more outgoing, you know, whatever. And again, not saying that's good, bad, or different, but it does take the right person, you know, you need one that can be in. And I think, again, I work with Joshua, but I think he is a good fit. Tim, I don't, not to put you on the spot, anything you wanna?
No, it's really positive. He's been very good. He's worked through quite a few things already.
He's easy, he's easy.
Yep.
That's awesome. Much appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Joanne, do you have anything?
What's that?
Oh, ask Joanne if she had anything. Public open forum, was there any other additions today?
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See ya.
Next up, we have consent agenda. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second by Emily. And discussion?
If I could just make a few comments, I would start with Kelly Fox, thanking her for her numerous years of service. She retired from a federal position. I would also thank Terry Mason, who has amended her resignation, I think it's October twentieth. We changed the date to the nineteenth because it's the last day of work, that is prior to the end of break. So we will accept her resignation for October nineteenth and wish her and her family the best of luck in their move, the next chapter in life endeavor. Number eleven, just so you're, well, it might not be eleven anymore, I'm sorry. Emily Amber put in a leave request as a para, and again, I'm recommending it, it is for returning leave, but it's not something where she just automatically qualifies under FMOLA, she doesn't have enough time in that position. That's why it's here, I just mentioned that. Other than that, I think that's all I have, unless there are any questions that anyone has right now.
No questions? Can we get a motion for, I'm sorry, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? None? Alright, can we get a motion for the Resolution for Acceptance of Gifts and Donations?
I'll move, Joanne.
And a second?
Second.
Resolution for Acceptance of Gifts and Donations, whereas School Board Policy seven oh six establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts and donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute four sixty-five point oh three states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or devise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools ISD three sixty-one accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. Excuse me. District donations received are Farmer's Insurance Rona McKay Clorox wipes for FES and FHS, Border Boost tees for the district staff, National Guard sub sandwich lunches for all staff, Edward Jones John Winkles scones for all staff, Bronco football boosters robotic tackle dummy at thirty-eight hundred dollars, Rainy Lake Medical Center football huddle Bluetooth remote, two hundred dollars, Bronco swim boosters Shiberland meat awards at one ninety-three seventy-seven, girl swimsuits one thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents, Bronco softball boosters softball field maintenance two hundred and seventy dollars. We have a motion and a second. Can we get, am I up needing here? Are we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very nice donations, thank you very much. Next up, we have action items. Can we get a motion for action items?
Well, actually, just number two.
Oh, sorry, that, yep.
So a motion to approve the resolution, we don't have to read that one.
Okay, a motion to approve the Resolution of Election of School Board Members and calling the School District General Election.
So moved.
And can we get a second? Okay. All in favor? Sorry, is there discussion?
No, just so everyone's aware, I mean, this is a formal deal we have to do for the election. There's certain things that has to go to the paper, has to go to the county, and so on, so that's all we're doing. And again, there was a correction, the first one had had four members, we only have three open spots.
Gotcha. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion is carried. Number three, approve the ISD three sixty-one's strategic roadmap. Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
But Joanne, a second?
Second.
Second by Emily, and discussion?
I can just make a couple comments here, just on the documents that we have. Just so that the public is aware that the document is attached here or is attached to the agenda if anyone is looking. But we have a roadmap for everyone to be aware of that has been worked on. Teamwork's led not only the board, but also groups, as I've mentioned, from parents, students, staff, through a process of getting input, developing. And again, the vision, mission is not majorly changed. I'm gonna say the core values and strategic directions are not majorly changed, but they have been worked, Smith, they are gonna be a focus. The plan is to spruce this up. We just finished this, what was it, last Wednesday? Thursday, whatever. But to spruce it up, we're actually gonna start a plan. All of our action items are gonna actually fall under one of the four down here. There could be a few things, as Ray mentioned, that just have to go under other, but it's gonna be a goal to start trying to highlight. And then on the back is something we will also revisit, but it's the desired daily experience of students, staff, and parents. And so that is what we are adopting in general. Now, there are gonna be many things that work towards this, obviously, and so on. But I guess I'm very happy and excited to, it's not done, and it's gonna be a process that goes on and on, but has some core values. I've actually looked, I'll bring it up in my discussion, found some examples in all some other places, and spruced it up a little bit, and we'll probably get some help from some graphics people and so on. But it will be front and center, so I thank the board, as well as I thank everyone else that has been involved in the process.
Perfect, and are we, okay, can we, all in favor? Sorry?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Number four, approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, three-year School Board Governance Plan. Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
Second.
And discussion?
Just a few comments, again, I'm gonna move, sorry. The document here, and again, this is a working document, this will be coming back. We haven't a hundred percent decided, but they say at least quarterly, could be sooner. The biggest piece is to work through and what are we missing? What are we, you know, what would we like added? And again, this is ours, we have, you know, another one for the buildings in general, so to speak. But it's a working document, it'll be updated on and on. And like I say, I added a few things that we talked about from last week, like negotiations for not this year, but next year, put those in there. We don't have all the groups, because a few of them are done, but other things as we come up, major things, you know, big tick, it's not a nitpicky. We did talk about some new policies, and I'll talk a little bit about that or adjusting some of our policies, but that will come under line, so again, part of the process, and hopefully approve it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next, we have committee and administrative reports. Melissa Tate, you are up.
Okay, our enrollment's at four sixty-three. I think for the most part, all of our students showed up, we had one from fourth grade who was on the list that was not here. So we're at four sixty-three, start of year. We have homecoming coming up on September thirtieth, and FES students will participate in the dress-up days, the same dress-up days as FHS, and we'll also do the parade. We have parent teacher conferences coming up October sixth and the thirteenth. And then we're doing a fall picnic this year instead of the spring picnic, just because spring gets so busy, and that is going to be on October nineteenth. We have National Walk to School Day coming up on October twelfth. And then we have our October third in-service coming up, and our building will be doing half-day training or three-hour training on fast bridge progress monitoring. And we will do our first set of data meetings to get our kids into literacy intervention groups, and then we'll also have letters work time, so just having our office serve. And then I gave you guys a copy of what we sent home to families about just how we're moving towards teaching reading at a non-literacy school as we get deeper into learning more about the science of reading and deeper into our letters training and even some reading fathers training and that sort of thing. So while we're not doing all of these things yet, these are the things that we're moving towards. And it talks about that, like some change for families is we don't have spelling lists that go home anymore just because research really doesn't support that rote memorization of spelling, and that might be hard for parents to understand because that's something tangible that they can hold on to, but the evidence doesn't really support that rote memorization commits that to long-term memory. So we want to get away from that and really work on students' cognitive patterns, and that will come as we are learning more and more about science of reading and those sorts of things. So I just give it to you because not all of you have kids at school, so you might not know, so it's nice to keep in mind of what we're doing. Any questions?
Can you explain a little more of what the training is that you're gonna be doing?
For our fast bridge training, that's just, that's the new assessment that we moved to this year. We're still doing STAR assessment, but fast bridge is a reading and mass reading tool, but it also has a progress monitoring component in it, and that's why we wanted to move to fast bridge because of the progress monitoring component. And it also includes interventions, and all of the literacy scores and assessments are all linked to the science of reading, to the five pillars of the science of reading, like phonemic awareness, fluency, phonics comprehension, and one more that I'm drawing up my blank right now. But so we'll take those scores, and we will build school-wide intervention groups by grade level and kind of flood those grade levels with extra staff just to do like a thirty-minute intervention on the scale area that they might be having deficits in. And then we'll also take some of those high flyers and provide some enrichment activities for them. So we'll be starting our intervention groups in October after our first data meeting on October third. So that week should be our first intervention group. It's gonna be a slow process because we're learning fast bridge. That's where I have that group of teachers also doing that training through the University of Minnesota, where we can learn how to interpret that data, and then we'll bring that information back to the classroom teachers so that eventually they can run their own data meetings and don't need to be facilitated by us. So hopefully, I mean, cross our fingers, but I think that good things are...
Yeah, it's great, like you're gonna catch them on earlier than, yeah, I like it. Thank you very much.
And Missy, I just wanna say thanks for bringing this. I think that, you know, these pieces are really helpful, especially when we don't have little ones in the school, and this is just fantastic stuff, so thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, we have Tim Everson, secondary principal.
Our enrollment, we're at five thirty-one, we're up one from last month. As Mitch and Missy had mentioned, Friday, February thirtieth is Pet Fest for our homecoming. We'll have the Pet Fest on Wednesday. We have the parade on Friday afternoon. We have the parade on Friday afternoon and we'll have students working on their floats in the arenas throughout that week. The ice will be going out, so we'll, we'll be able to get in there. Missy mentioned we have a teacher in-service on Monday, the third. And we also will be getting training in FastBridge. However, we're using FastBridge over here for S E L, self-assessment by the students called My Savers. And then we're gonna be using it. Also, the teachers will be doing the evaluation of the students and then we compare the two. And the hope is that we'll catch students who we may not have observed or felt that they were having difficulty and then they were, through their self-assessment, we'll be able to find them and then work with them. So we'll be getting training Saturday and then we're gonna be spending time in our teams, our grade level teams as we've set up right now. That's our P G P, our K C O M, is where every grade level now has a team of teachers behind them and monitoring things. So we're gonna be working on that and starting to do that self, or the teacher assessment piece that afternoon. We have parent teacher conferences Monday, October tenth and Wednesday, the twelfth through five to eight. We'll get a Sky Alert sent out to parents. And then we have group of teachers start meeting last Tuesday and we'll meet again tomorrow night. We're looking at middle-level learning, you know, something that came up in teamwork or the dominating planning mentioned by parents and staff. So we're gonna spend the year talking about how we can make that happen for next year. And kind of two pieces. One right now, we're looking at the physical space, how we could possibly keep the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade more isolated. And then we'll also be working on like how it would look and feel in the classrooms because it's, that's a big piece, how it would, how it would be different. So I have.
Thank you. Up next is Kevin Grober, superintendent.
Okay, first, first thing before I get by a moment and forget, we need to set the date to canvas or to formally approve the election results following the election in early November. The window where we have to do this is between November fourteenth and the eighteenth. The fourteenth is a Monday and I'm just asking the group, we don't need action, we'll just go set it and that's when we're gonna meet. I mean, there's times we've done a seven in the morning meeting because it, it is literally a five-minute deal. You know, we read what we need to and done. We can do a normal five fifteen, we can do, it doesn't have to be on Monday, the fourteenth. I'm just asking, is there any preference or anyone want? I mean, it can be a noon meeting, it can be, you know, we can have people zoom in. I shouldn't use zoom. Via Google, whatever, you know, we just, we'll put it out if we were obviously gonna zoom or Google or whatever, we'd have to put your location. But so I'm asking if there's any preference. It is during deer season, so we're not, and, and, and again, I'm throwing it out. All we need is four, I, I mean, just to be honest, you, you know. And I'm sure some of the others will be, the group that's here, would you rather do a normal, you know, five, five fifteen?
I would rather do that than a seven A M.
Well, no, and, and just different ones have done different things. Should I just set it for Monday, the fourteenth at five fifteen? Like, it's a second Monday, but okay, that was my thought, but.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna do that then. Some, some other things, just to throw your way an update. The payroll position was posted, open for just about two weeks. We have three applicants and they're working on setting up interviews. I don't know much more than that at this point. There's, Stacey was working on getting a few people to help with the interview process. And so we'll keep that ball rolling. Whether you noticed tonight or not, we are using Google. Our Zoom account is technically done and we want to go pay again. And again, I'm not saying it, it is a conversation to have because there actually is a reason we are at Google School. Google doesn't have all the controls that like Zoom has where we can control a lot of the people that are on here and stuff. So that being said, we, we use Google tonight. We have not purchased an individual account. You, you can have a free account, but like you can't go over an hour, only so many people can get in. I guess my conversation, there, there are some other options. Obviously, we have it videoed here, so people can see it. But if you do wanna live in the moment, this next question I have, like our, a lot of our deans, we YouTube, you know, which, which we can do, but people can interact that way, you know, if something comes up. The problem with interaction right now is we don't have control. Yeah, you know, and I'm just throwing it out there. So it's something we need to figure out. If we are gonna continue it, I'm probably gonna have the district go buy a, a single Zoom account, you know, so that we can truly have control and monitor if it's something, you know, we don't necessarily think we're gonna continue. I don't wanna spend two hundred and fifty bucks. I mean, not a huge amount of money, but I don't wanna spend that if, I mean, the feeling is, no, we, they can see it here. Yeah, you know, or we can, like you say, YouTube it like we do, it's just people can't interact. And I guess that's, again, we're not voting, but I'm open to what people think. I mean, say I, I don't know. I mean, personally, I, I like it. I would like people to come back to our meetings, you know, but on the flip side, I do appreciate if someone wants to tune in. Now, that being said, we can do individual things with a board member, just like Jen was gonna, she put her address on here. We can do that, again, one-on-one with a Google or a Zoom, you, you know, and work through those things if, if any of you are gone. It's just if we're doing, you know, live, gonna interact with the community and allow them to interact, then I think we need to be able to have control. Not that I ever expect to have a situation like we did, you know, last year, but I wanna be able to control it. Other than just hitting close right now and shutting it down for everyone. Are there any thoughts on directions or?
I think if they're gonna react or interact with us, I'd rather have them face-to-face versus online. That's my personal opinion on it, but I don't mind them watching it live from home.
Well, no, there's also, like I say, we can set up a new YouTube, you know, with a, a camera and the, the sound, just like, kinda like you'd watch anything else. The hockey game, the, the basketball game, whatever. That's just different technology. Again, we have a, a count to do that. In fact, Mr. Boyle offered to do that. I went, hang on, I need Jen online tonight. She, you know, was gonna, so I said, we can't do that for this. I mean, if that's what our goal is, so that people can watch it live and hear it the second it happens, that is an easy rock to do, which we don't need anything else. And we can move that route. And again, K C C gets it out fairly quickly and for people that can't watch it live, because we're not posting, we're not recording these. So that is for everyone else that can't be in the home. Is that okay to move or next to try it? I mean, we can always change.
I'd be in favor of that option.
Okay, perfect. Another piece, just so you're aware, and, and I, I pulled it out for those of you that were with. One of the, the recommendations in our teamwork's training the other night, and it was a very, I think, a great idea, and so I've already got it going, is looking at what the, the school actually deems as committees. Because if you're aware, yeah, every committee technically, whether it's a committee of one or a committee of the board as a whole, they all have to be posted. So Ray made the comment that, like, for instance, we have an M H S, M H S H L representative. You know, it's not a formal committee. We, the board chair, whoever that may be, does appoint board members, but it's looking at restructuring. Some things should be true committees, like our negotiation committees. But there are things like, and I'm just gonna throw it out, meeting prefer. You, you know, it doesn't have to be a true committee. It can be representatives so that we can, you know, set dates. We don't have to, you know, publicly have everything as a board. So I'm gonna bring this to you in the next, and, and here's, here's another one. We, we said continuing education committee. It's one person that meets with, that, that, that should be a representative of the board on the continuing education group. So I'm gonna rework some of these, won't be set in stone, and bring it to get the process going so that we are ready come January. Again, five or six will stay as true committees, but several are just gonna be reps where they're gonna meet. They should still report back, but I thought it was, I thought it was great. Yeah. Don't think I picked up and walked away with it? I think that's all I have right now unless you have any questions of me at this point.
No, good. Alright, next up, we have Beth Slitinsky from Community Ed.
I have a quick little update here that's sent from me or, or to inform you. She said some updates. We have moved, we're in room one eighteen and have settled in and we love the new space. Just if anyone's not aware, it's down that way downstairs on the first floor. And the, Janessa with Kate moved to the room next door. It was the room, let me say, the, the, that Beth had in prior, when she was grand coordinator. Angelo Scholler has been hired just recently by you here in the last little bit as the house coordinator. She's doing a fantastic job. We have fifty-ish participants registered and we're getting approximately twenty per activity. They have defensive driving going on September twenty-sixth. Drive restraining starting also on September twenty-sixth. Water aerobic started in the beginning of September and gun safety starting October first. Thank you, Beth.
Community reports. Community Ed Advisory Board. We have our first meeting in October and I believe we have to meet four times per year. So they're gonna start, I believe collaborating the Cape meetings with the Community Ed and kinda do a collaboration that way. Rec Commission?
The only thing I would have, and I'm just gonna pipe in, I should have meant, I, I did meet with, just so you're aware, the conversations are still going on on whether we change the structure or don't. I met with Betty again last week, I forget which day. We're in the process now where Bill is gonna get a subcommittee of rec to come look at what we kind of pulled together. And then before we bring it back to the rec commission as a whole. So it is moving forward. I mean, it's a lot of just conversations. I've gotten some, I'll be honest with you, I've gotten some documents so that we don't have to recreate the wheel if this would move forward from other schools that have agreements with the city for use of fields and, and different things. And, and just getting, that's part of our investigation is trying so that we don't have to recreate everything and do, you, you know. And again, it's, if we get there, obviously, we would want agreements. You know, there's terms pieces, there's all kinds of things. But our biggest task has been looking financially and it is tough. And, you know, it's, it's trying to figure things out, making some guesses. We haven't kind of penciled out how we think it would work and, and kind of both staying neutral if that's the right way. We've talked about, and again, this will come to the whole world and if it goes down this road. But, you know, there are some funds left over and talked about how we would divide those up and hope that both groups would maybe just put them to the side just in case, you know, let's see what happens in a year, you know, or maybe two. You know, things aren't working, if it's costing the city more than we thought or the school more than not, maybe we have to restructure. And then we also talked, there's not a lot of equipment. I mean, there's a couple of vehicles, not, you know, vehicles are worth money nowadays, but there's a more, there's a few tangibles that not, not a, a big deal. If it goes there, we'll figure that out. But that's where we're at. We're gonna keep going and like I say, the next step is we want to have, Bill has a, a school rep, a city rep, and a, let me say, a larger, to come. And we're just gonna have a conversation. If they're okay, then we would bring them to the rec commission and then they would go through whatever action and get the ball rolling before we come to the city and the schools.
And the rec board also meets this Wednesday. Next up, we have adjournment. Can I get a motion? Second?
Second.
Five fifty-nine P M. All in favor? Aye.